Are we, are we going big? Okay, let's see if I'm big, we're live. Okay, we're, Big says we're live. Okay, so let's start the, the meeting. We do have minutes from September 23rd. They're not really complete and Devin is, is gonna be away for a couple of weeks. So Marty suggests that we hold them until the next meeting, which will be two weeks from now. We're gonna set up, we've set up a regular meeting schedule every other week, beginning with this meeting on October 7th.
So do we have them vote on that?
Uh, well, we're not doing anything, so there's no need to vote.
Okay, I thought we
I'm sorry, vote on what?
Vote to postpone, we're approving the minutes.
No, we don't need to vote on that.
Okay.
Okay. And people should go to the website and look at the minutes and, and make any additions. I mean, there, there are a lot of blanks in the, in minutes. You know, there are places for people's statements to go. So they should send Devin any statements you want to add to the minutes or other things. She'll be back by the time we get to the minutes. Okay. Let's move on to discussion of the hearing.
All right, before we start, it looks like Michael is saying that Jonathan Nandy's trying to get into the meeting.
Okay.
He's an attendee right now.
Yep, I see him. Okay. Okay, so first item on the agenda is discussion of the, the public hearing and listening session last week. There was a robust discussion at the reimagining committee or task force about the, the meeting. Maybe we can have a robust discussion or, or maybe not. What do people think? Any thoughts on what we heard at the listening session? Any ideas that, you know, you got out of that?
Well, I actually more have procedural questions. One of the things I picked up because I did, you know, attend the reimagining meeting on Friday and I listened to the, listened to the discussion. And I know that one aspect of it is, well, if the purpose of the meeting would be a listening session.
Excuse me, could everyone mute themselves? Is some noise coming in from someone's room? Okay, Ron.
Okay, yeah, so I have a procedural, procedural questions, if that's the right term. I know that I listened in as an attendee on the reimagining committee. And I realized that one of the major concerns had to do with the appropriate role of our two committees during that listening session. Because it was advertised as a listening session.
Okay, wait.
Please mute yourself, Raj.
Is it Raj? Raj, mute yourself.
I'm setting it.
Okay, yeah, okay. So there was concern about, since it was a public listening session, we advertise as a listening session, whether any of, any of us on either committee should have actually made comments of our own. And there was some, and I know there are a couple of members of our, of our committee spoke as individuals rather than as committee members. But it was, first of all, it was perceived by some people in the reimagining committee that it was our committee speaking, which was not accurate. But whether or not that was accurate, there's still the question of if we're sitting as committee members, should we also, should we be playing the dual role? So that's just a question. And whatever we decide, it should be an agreement that the two committees have, so that everybody's on the same page. So I just wanted to raise that as, as
Okay, I think, you know, that, that was something that happened in the past. I mean, there, I mean, from my standpoint, you know, June, you know, spoke. And I think she was very upset. And, you know, I let her go on and I tried to stop her. She didn't stop. And then I felt kind of guilty when Raj stood up and, because I knew that he was gonna be critical of the police department. I didn't want anyone to think that I was being one-sided, so I let him go on. So, you know, to some degree, it's my fault, but you know, that, that, it was a minor glitch in, in a meeting that we should look at in terms of the information that we were able to get from, from people. Going forward, we can, you know, address that more forcefully, yeah.
And, and I, I would just like to go on record as apologizing for having gone on like that. I, I, as some people on the committee know, I was getting ready to step down at that meeting from, for what I was going through. And I had many sleepless nights leading up to it, so my apologies.
Apology accepted.
Thank you.
Okay, any other thoughts on the listening session?
Yeah. June, your apology is accepted, definitely. I, I accept your apology and I hope other people also do accept your apology. It was clear you were upset. And just, I want to preface that it's not my intention to sort of scold you or, you know, anything in, in, in that regard. Though I, I do want to make a critical point, which is unfortunately, what happened is a result of a lot of the things you said is that it created a working dynamic that has become sort of like a, you know, the the Bernard group, you know, it's, it's, it's sort of created this strife unfortunately that, that makes it a little bit more difficult to, to bridge to, to the, create and build the bridges that we need in order to get this work done. And, you know, I don't want this whole thing to be like, you know, this is this person's group, this is that person's group, you know, and, and there's this sort of animosity in the center, you know. And, and, and what that does is it actually does not, it enables us from actually getting the work we need to get done. Because now there's sort of a separation of, you know, instead of in understanding of, okay, well, we're working towards the same thing here. And we need to be mindful, or we're working towards similar things. We have different agendas, different charges. But, but I feel strongly that there's been many distractions in, in, on this committee. And, and those distractions have kept us from actually focusing on the work we're out here to do. And it's creating strife, it's creating division. And, and you know, that division is not good. It's just not a good look for any one of us. And, and
Let's not get into back and forth.
Excuse me, excuse me, Bernard, I would, I would like to finish my thought before you cut in, please. May I?
Go ahead.
Thank you. So this is not a knock on any particular person. I am responding to June, just based on what was said. But this is in general, right? You know, I'm saying this in general because it is imperative that we keep these things in mind. You know, I'm not here to be the integrity police, but I am stating what to me seems a very important issue that we need to keep in mind. Because now there's a division, there's a clear, you know, if it wasn't there before, there's divisiveness and there's a division in place. And it's not a good thing. It's not a good look for anyone.
So Jonathan, I couldn't agree with you more, Jonathan. And by the way, I'm a big fan of your drumming program. My kids all went to DeBuchan and love your drumming.
Okay.
But I, what I, I just want to say that division was not of my making. I was targeted by people on the other committee and other community members. And my life has been made, and my family's life has been a living hell. I was basically written to and said that I had a chilling smile that if anyone was sensitive, they shouldn't watch the video of Bernard and me, that 10 second clip of Bernard making the motion, the choking motion and, and me smiling, that it was, that they, if anyone's sensitive, they should not watch that. My daughter, who's an 11th grader at Brookline High, had to sit through a, believe it or not, a drama class where another child presented Bernard's, the Brookline tab article on Bernard's action as, and my smile as, as a current event thing. And, and my child had to sit there afraid that someone was gonna think that her mother was racist. She was afraid to talk to her friends about any of this. She wasn't sleeping. So I'm, I'm just saying, I didn't make the division. And what I said at that meeting was, we should have one committee, Bernard. I think two committees is absurd in this.
Okay, June, I don't want to get into, you know, back and forth on, on that topic. And in terms of, you know, the division between two committees, look, we have work to do. If people wanna, on, on, you know, this committee or another committee or outside the committees, you know, see division, they can. But we have work to do and we should, should do that work. You know, if I, if I can get over some of the things that have been said about me, we all can get over them, okay? So what, let's talk about the, the listening session. What, what did we learn? Looks like Elizabeth.
Thank you. I think there were a couple of things that stood out to me. One was how diverse the opinions were about the Brookline Police Department based on people's individual experiences. And I thought that there was a lot of support for a lot of good work that happens in the department. But clearly, everybody sees, has interacted with the department in their particular window, through their lens. And so they see it in one way, so they can speak to that. And I thought that that was instructive for us as a committee, because it made me realize how important it is for me as a committee member to actually not only see it through one lens, but to actually be educated to see all the different aspects of the breadth of the, what happens at the police department. I think it's very, it's an important unifying function for us as a committee to understand how the Brookline Police Department works in multiple frames across Brookline. And I think we'll be much better at helping with unifying people, helping people understand, helping the Brookline Police Department connect better to the community if we understand all the different aspects. So I actually thought that it went back to our first meeting, Bernard. I was thinking about how, I think, I, I think maybe you or maybe Casey, some, I think it brought up the importance of us understanding all the different aspects. And it really stood out to me in that public hearing, how, how much we could help if we did do that.
Right. It's always important to listen to all sides, all sides. Any other thoughts?
Well, you know, I, I thought it was incredible, actually, how many young people came on to speak. And, and, you know, especially many of the people who spoke were people who had not planned to speak. It wasn't just young people who spoke. There, there was, you know, an unprecedented amount of young people speaking and, and current high school students. But I was just really surprised by how many people who came on that had no intentions of speaking but felt compelled to share their words for whatever reason, something didn't sit well with them. Or what have you. Who's making a phone call there? But, but in any case, I, you know, I think, I think there's something important to pay attention to here, you know, as far as, you know, what, what would it take to, you know, kind of listen more to young people in, in, in try to create an environment that fosters sort of a listening of their opinion or, you know, and, and people who likely would not speak, you know, even as we go into this kind of, you know, complaints subcommittee and try to find people who, you know, maybe wanted to make a complaint but never made a complaint for whatever reason, they just, they just didn't. I think it's, it's really incredible when, when people kind of find a gumption and the energy to feel like, you know what, I, I, I am gonna say something. And, you know, and, and I asked myself the question, what would it be like, what would it look like if, if we actually had an environment that, that made it easier for people to feel like they can share their perspective and where they're coming from in, you know, in whatever, whatever form. So, so I, I just thought that was really incredible.
Any other thoughts? Well, I'll say something. There's a lot of discussion by white participants saying that we as white people, speaking of them, because I'm not white, we as white people need to listen to the experiences of people of color. I think that's very important, but not selective listening. You know, not every black person in, in Brookline, based, just based on the hearing, has had negative experiences with the cops. Those that have, we definitely need to listen to them. But we should not give out the message that if you're black and you're in Brookline, you're in trouble. There was a speaker who talked about an incident, a crime incident in Brookline when he was out of Brookline. And he was afraid to come to Brookline out of fear that the police were going to attack him. Now, my first question, where was he that he felt safer than in Brookline? And my second question is, why does someone have that fear of coming into Brookline because, you know, some incident that happened there involving another black person? I'm really worried about that and worried because I think some people are giving the message to the community that black people need to be afraid. And that's not a message I want to convey. And it gives a picture of our town that is just totally off the wall. And that's not what Brookline is. And, you know, we can't be giving out messages like that. That is one thing that, you know, I picked up in the, in the hearing. But, you know, I, I think it is true. We have to listen to other people's experience. And that's true in all, you know, areas of our life.
Yeah, if I may, Bernard, I, I totally agree with you, you know, and, and unfortunately, you know, there's already a negative outlook like that out there. You know, that already exists. Obviously, we need to work towards improving it, making it better and changing it. But I remember, you know, going to get my haircut in Roxbury and my barber talking about exactly what you were saying, right? And, you know, and this is, this is years ago. And, and it's continuous. And, and almost every person I come across that doesn't live in Brookline has that perception. And so it's already existing, it's already out there. And, you know, and I think part of our job here is to work on changing that.
Right.
Yeah, so I'm thinking about the, the specifics of the, of the incident that was related at the, at the meeting. In which he, he specifically said that, that he'd heard that, I guess it was in Brookline Village, that there had been some sort of a serio, serious, they were looking for a suspect in Brookline Village who had committed what sounds like a, a, a crime that was a felony. And, and, and the description was large black male. And, and that was why this individual felt concerned about coming back to Brookline, since he is a large black male. And I, I could easily imagine, the trouble is, I'm not him, so I, but I'm, but I can easily imagine that he might, that he could, that, many people feel, even if it's not coming back to Brookline. Anytime you are, if you're a large black male and you are in, anywhere near a place where people, you know, people looking for a large black male, I can think of a good reason for being reluctant to be anywhere near that place. If you think people are just gonna pick up any random large black male or, 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 you know, as, as the main characteristic. I, I remember the, the hearing several months ago of an incident in Newton in which a person, a, a large black male with his wife, resident of Newton, was just kind of walking down the street. And some Newton police officers came up to him with guns drawn. And they checked his identification and they had him go. But the reason why they, they did it is because, well, we heard that there was a robbery, an armed robbery, and the description was large black male. The thing is, there's this thing about large black male, they all look alike, that large black males have to deal with. And, you know, in almost any non-predominantly black place, that is, can be part of the dynamic. And so this specifically was about Brookline, his experience, his concern about coming home to Brookline. But I can easily imagine at least worrying about that in, not just in Brookline, but in almost any predominantly white area.
No, I'm not doubting that, you know, there's a justification. And he may have had a justification for worrying. I'm just, you know, the kind of the fact that, you know, he was, he was made to be scared, fearful of coming back to his town. And I, I think that's a problem.
It's a problem, but it's, but it's, in some ways, it's deeper than Brookline, although we are in Brookline. And we are, we're the ones who can, who will, who need to have, need to deal with it in Brookline, as far as Brookline goes. Yeah. Yeah, I, I was actually even more concerned about the, the white guy who said, who lives in Brookline and said that his, his, he said his, his black friends were afraid to visit him in Brookline because they expected that they would be stopped if they drove through Brookline. That startled me even more than the, the account of, of, of the, of the black male who, there was an active incident going on that he thought he might be targeted for. This was just a, a, a white person with black friends who, from what they've heard, are, are assuming they're gonna be stopped if they drive through Brookline, which I, which I think is even, you know, in some ways even more serious.
Right, so we need to figure out why that's the case, Raj? Or try to understand it.
I understand, I think, I think I understand it, but
Well, you know, make sure
It doesn't fix it, yeah.
Raj?
Raj, you're muted.
You're muted, Raj.
If you want to talk, you have to unmute yourself.
Hear me now?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, so when the conversation started, most of the comments started to be more on the favorable side of the police. And as it went on, and some of the people who had not intended to speak, the trend was more on the not positive side. And why do you, my question to anybody and everybody is, why do you think that was? And before, and second question is, Bernard, you said that we are not that kind of a place. But the person just before me and other indications are that we have the issue, which is why we are meeting. So anyways, those are my two, second one comment, but I'd like to hear what others think of my question, whether they saw it the way I did.
Yeah, I think, and what I meant, I mean, sure, every town has problems. You know, at a select board meeting a few weeks ago, someone in the public comment session, session said, Brookline is the most racist city or town in Massachusetts. I mean, it's that mentality that I'm reacting to. The idea that someone thinks that Brookline is the most racist town or municipality in, in the state is very troubling. I'm sure there are a lot of people who think that, but why? You know, what, what, what is it that, that causes people to think something like that? I mean, I mean, my experience in Massachusetts suggests otherwise. Of course, I haven't had that great, you know, much experience. But, you know, the idea that someone would think that Brookline is the most racist is very troubling.
Right, I, I think, you know, instead of looking at it troubling as a sort of, like a pain point for you as an individual, based on your own experiences. For me, I, you know, would look at it troubling as in, what can I understand from your experience that has you feeling like as if this is the most racist town in Massachusetts? And so, so I think there's a two different, you know, kind of dichotomies in trying to understand perspectives of human experience within a place such as Brookline. Obviously, as you've stated, every town, every organization, you know, enterprise, what have you, has, has differences. We have our own. We have to, must acknowledge our own problems as it stands and bring the darkness into the light in, in precisely per Raj's point. That's why we're here.
Yeah, yeah, no, that, I agree. We, we definitely have to acknowledge our problems. And, but, you know, the point of this, we should also just make sure that we are acknowledging them in all of their nuances and acknowledge them accurately. Marty?
Yeah, do we have a raise hand feature? I don't think so, do we?
We should.
Yeah, if you go to the participants panel, at the bottom of the participants panel, there should be a place for you to raise your hand. I believe that's
Oh, I see. Yeah. Oh, yeah, okay, thank you. Anyway, I raised my hand visually as a technophobe. So I have quite a few scattered thoughts, but I'll try to be very brief about them, about all of this. It's been an interesting and useful discussion, as was the hearing. First of all, these, that kind of a hearing is very important. I'm, I'm glad we did it. We'll have to do more, especially once we have some draft proposals. I think we need public feedback on that as well. As you all know, this is not my first rodeo. In 87 and 2009, we had analogous public hearings. And I think it's very important that we take very seriously what each person said. And I actually think it's, we can't overstate the utility of such hearings. I'm choosing my words carefully. The problem is that a hearing like that is not going to be a random sample. It's not gonna be a representative sample. It's going to be the people that were alerted to the hearing and wanted to come say something. And the, the disconnect is between those individual people who we each, each one deserves to be taken seriously. And the gap from that, which is not bridgeable, I don't, I believe, into generalizing about anything. I mean, the one thing we can generalize from that hearing is that there are some people who are appreciative of the police department and not very critical of it. And there are other people at the opposite who are very critical of the police department and are terribly appreciative of it. But it really doesn't matter to me how many people in the community of 56,000 or whatever we are fall into either of those categories or where they fall into the middle. What matters to me and did in 87 and did in 2009 is what can we do to make things better? Specifically on this question of having people of color being free to come to Brookline, to live in Brookline. We have to do everything possible to do that. And trying to figure out right now in this meeting or in any meeting, how bad is that problem? It doesn't appeal to me as a worthy discussion. It, it seems to me we have to take that as a serious problem and try to deal with it. And measuring it is impossible, even the kind of survey they're talking about in the task force. I'm not gonna have a lot of confidence that that's gonna tell me that much, that much that's useful. You know, for instance, we're talking in the complaints subcommittee or accountability about ways to address the largely immeasurable pool of people that have been intimidated about filing a complaint. There's, we don't know those people. We don't, we're not gonna hear from those people. We have to assume that those people exist and do everything we can to make them feel welcome to file a complaint if they feel a complaint is necessary. So that's just an example of what we're talking about. And I wish we could stay fixed on what can we do to improve things without trying to figure out, quote, "How racist is Brookline?" I don't find that to be a question that we can either answer or that's very helpful to us.
I, I would just like to mention sort of parenthetically, in response to Raj's, Raj's question earlier. The, I, I believe that the reason why the, the first half of, of the hearing was so much in favor of the police is because there were a group of people who were aware of the hearing and who feel, and who strong there were a group of people who were aware of the hearing and who feel, and who strongly, uh, believe in the police department actually kind of organized themselves to, to, to speak with affidavits and written affidavits, as well as spoken testimony, went after the other, and that was the most organized group. And I think after they were done, uh, the people who, uh, were not in that group felt, felt they needed to respond. And that's why you get so many people who said they weren't planning to respond, but felt the need to respond in the second half. And that was why it was such a dichotomy. That's just the way it worked out, but I think that was the reason. That's all I wanted to say about that.
Yeah. And that's how things happen in, in any place all the time. And, you know, I think like Marty said, that's not a scientific, uh, sample of, of, uh, people's opinions, people's experiences, but it is important for us to, to, uh, understand and, and, and figure out what, what's really important in those, uh, experiences.
May I just add one thing as far as that goes, which I forgot to mention is, and I don't denigrate the people I'm about to refer to, not by name, but I think that at least half of the people that are in the category that Ron was just talking about that came up later. And I found it actually a little curious that so many of them said the exact same introductory words I wasn't planning to speak. I, being a skeptical type about everybody on both sides of the equation. I thought that might have been, uh, more orchestrated than people are saying right now. But it doesn't matter because I take those people seriously. But the point is that many of those people, Bernard and I at least have heard from many times before. I've seen them, I've heard them at various select board meetings, uh, talking about these issues. So, um, I, I would not concede that they were less organized than the other group.
Yeah.
And it doesn't matter to me either. It really does not matter to me.
I, 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 I'm sorry. I, I have to, I, I'm just, I'm confused, Marty. Because there's, there's, you know, one part where you say that, you know, we have to take these people seriously and what they're saying, uh, is serious accounts of their, what, whatever they're saying that it being serious. But then the other part of you saying that, uh, it was somehow orchestrated because you are skeptical of the fact their introduction seemed to have similarities in, in what they're saying.
I think, you're saying that if they're, if they're orchestrated, that's fine.
Hold, hold on. I, I heard what Marty said, but, you know, I, I would, I would like to finish my thought before, before I'm cut off. You know, and I don't mean that in any way disrespectful to you, Bernard, but.
No, don't worry about that.
Okay. So, so I think it's important for me to just finish my thought here. I, I'm confused because those are opposites, right? Trusting and believing in people in what you're seeing and thinking that what you're seeing are somehow orchestrated or, you know, it, it actually doesn't believe in them and what they're saying, right? And, and, and so there's, there's a sense of safety in, in sort of when people, you know, this is, you know, trying to understand, you know, I, I'm not an expert in human development and human psychology, though I have a lot of experience in that area. But, but when you can see when those people came on, there was a lot of people who were nervous. They were nervous for some reason, for whatever reason, they were nervous to share what was going on and, and, and what was on their mind. And so by saying something like that, it's a preface, you're prefacing that I did not feel comfortable sharing, but I am sharing now because I feel compelled for whatever reason. In saying that, you feel a sense of safety and security. And that's why you had several people saying what sounded like the same thing in their introduction. Because for whatever reason, they didn't feel safe. That's the most important thing we have to keep in mind here. That's all I wanted to point out.
Okay, Paul?
Yeah. So I just have two points. I, I do, uh, agree with Elizabeth and Jonathan that, uh, a lot of different perspectives were, were shared with, with all of us. And we need to take account of all those perspectives when we're doing our work here. My second point is the, the thing about racism. So I'm, obviously I'm Asian American, but, but I, and I've not had a untoward, uh, police interaction. So I'm, I'm not speaking about that. I'm just speaking about the impression that people may have. And, um, so the impression that I have is there is racism in the town of Brookline. And I see that when, 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 um, when I, when I read the articles about, uh, their employees of color that says there's been allegations of racism and the town fights them for years and years on end. To me, it says something about the town when the town is so relentless in fighting those types of cases. And in some cases, you know, I, I've read, I, I don't know any of this personally. I don't know any of the, the litigants personally. You know, the, the, the litigant has one, one round, the town has one round. It may have been, uh, one person said this, the other person denied it. I don't see why the town persists. You know, it, it just makes a person like myself, you know, a person of color feel that, um, um, there is some type of racism, you know, it's unexplained, you know, but for, you know, the color of their skin or the allegation of racism. And it, it, people may have that kind of impression. That, that's all I'm saying. I'm not saying that, you know, I've been the, the subject of overt racism, you know, in the town. But I have that impression from my reading and, and how the town reacts to certain things. So those are my two points. And, and I, I, I hope we, we, we don't, uh, criticize the speakers or, 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 uh, other committee members or, uh, committee members on the, um, uh, committee for reimagining. It, it's unproductive. Um, I try to ascribe motives to them just as other people may try to ascribe, ascribe motives to us. It's really, really unproductive. We've been on this for, this is five forty-six right now. It's been a period of time. You know, we should move on.
Okay, let's move on. I just want to give people an opportunity to, uh, reflect on and, and, uh, report on their, you know, thoughts regarding the, uh, listening session. And the listening session was supposed to be an important part of our work, meaning, you know, opening up or, or having, giving people an opportunity to say whatever they wanted. You know, there, there's no, there's no, you know, um, um, you know, subject matter, uh, that they had to speak to. They just, it was just whatever people wanted. Uh, we got criticized for that, but you know, that, that's just the way it is. I think it's important to give people an opportunity to say, to say what, what's on their mind. And we, and then we should, should take that and, and, uh, try to understand it and, and act accordingly. So I, I guess next is, um, uh, let me just mention that, uh, I'm going to ask the committee to, uh, review, uh, the, um, body, uh, body worn camera regulations that, uh, Boston has put out, which may be, um, uh, part of, uh, the regulations that we in Brookline will, will, will be drafting. And I've been asked to also include, uh, apparently the C O U has a, a set of, um, proposed regulations for body worn cameras. So just look out for that, um, in the, uh, in the committee's, um, website. And I'd like, you know, we, we should talk about exactly how we do this, but I'd like to begin to, you know, review those regulations and, and, you know, give our views. I mean, it's, it's not going to be something that, uh, is necessarily going to be, uh, impacting the, uh, negotiations with the police union over the regulations. But, uh, to the extent that we can, you know, provide insight and, uh, information on, uh, some of the issues that the regulations raise, I think that can be very useful. So just look out for that.
I want to ask a question about that.
Okay.
Similar question that I asked the other day in the accountability committee, but is it clear where the ultimate responsibility is going to be to propose those regulations? And I'm hoping it's not to impose on Casey's other committee. It's the military surveillance equipment committee that's going to be the prime, uh, reviewing body on that. Because I think we've got so much on our plate to reform that that new project ought to be primarily theirs.
Yeah. No, that, that committee is taking that up. But I, I just wanted to give, uh, this committee and the task force the opportunity to, to review, um, this. Because, you know, people may have ideas, um, insights that, uh, could be, could be informative. So.
Okay. So I'm, so, so are you, are you going to send out that or is that, it's going to be available in the, in the, uh, in the, in the working documents?
Yeah, yeah.
But it, but it's not there yet.
It's not there yet. I mean, I, I've just been too busy.
Yeah, I understand. I understand. I just wanted to.
I mean, I have, and I should be able to actually send it out to everyone after this meeting, uh, without any comments. And you don't give me any comments back. So we don't violate the open meet, meeting law. But, um, I, I'll try to do that right after the meeting. Let me make a note. Regs. Okay. Uh, next, let's go over the subcommittee reports. So we have a number of subcommittees and they've actually been doing a lot of work. So it'd be good to report, uh, their work to the, uh, full committee. And, uh, I'm just going to read the names of the committees and, and, and if I don't know, uh, who is reporting on this, just, you know, speak up. Uh, there's a personnel structure and mission committee. Um, who's that?
I can speak to that, Bernard.
Okay.
Okay. Um, we're, we're supposed to have our first meeting tomorrow morning at nine. I just checked with Kate to make sure that the Zoom link got posted. If it didn't get posted, um, then we'll have to reschedule that. That committee is you and Michael Downey and myself. And, um, our first meeting is really to just get organized and start on the, uh, going down the priority list on that agenda.
Okay. It says, um, who else is on that committee? I mean, I think.
The three of us.
Okay. Michael Downey is not a voting member of this committee. I mean, not that he's not welcome. It's just that if anyone else is interested in, uh, this subcommittee, please let Elizabeth know.
Yeah. Yeah. And I'm, I'm waiting to hear back from Kate to make sure that got posted. I had centered the link, but, and the agenda, but with Devin and Kate, it may have not happened.
Okay.
If not, we'll have to reschedule.
Right. Okay.
Bernard, I have a question about that.
Okay.
This came up at the accountability committee the other day is, um, one thing that I think I, I didn't pull it out right now was on the topics for that subcommittee, which is, uh, well, was civil service. Am I, am I wrong that that was the committee that was listed for?
Civil service is on the agenda of that committee. Yes, Marty.
And, and the question that I raised the other day is the, uh, relationship between civil service relating to that and civil service relating to the accountability committee. Where that also comes into play. And I guess at some point, not now, I guess, we have to figure out who is primarily going to look at civil service, I think.
Yeah. And the, the way I see it, that the accountability committee should, should be taking up issues of hiring, uh, which is separate, as, as we talked about, uh, separate from civil service.
How can you separate civil service from hiring that?
Well, in this, in this way, one, once a, a person is, uh, selected off the list, a whole new set of things have to happen, uh, with HR, you know, going through, um, you know, background checks, psychological checks, uh, physical checks. Um, I mean, there's a lot of stuff to, you know, before a person can be sent off to the academy. And that, that really is, uh, I mean, it, it happens whether there's civil service or whether there's some other system. And, and I think it's important to really focus on that because that's where you find, or where, where you begin to discuss, you know, what type of psychological, um, checks are, are there on, uh, the hiring of police officers, for example, as well as, you know, a lot of other things.
Okay. So this is an area where I'm, I'm making a bit about civil service in, in, in Massachusetts. So how do people get on the civil service list? Uh, I mean, is it just, is it just a written test or are there other criteria? I, I just, I'm just not familiar with the process.
Casey, would you like to, um, give the expert view of that? You're, you're muted.
Sorry. Um, the civil service process, um, it's a test that's given every two years. It's the entry into the process of being hired. And so you, um, were a residency preferred community. So you need to have residency living in Brookline for one year, living up to the date of the exam. You go, you take the exam anywhere from several months to even six months later, those exam results are released. And then the department, um, enters into the hiring process where, um, there are a packet of information that is filled out and Chief Olir, you can correct me if I get any of this wrong, because I know you oversaw this for many years. They fill out an application process, which is, you know, fairly extensive. Um, there's a detective that's assigned, um, kind of as liaison to that applicant. Um, there's a background investigation that's, that's, um, conducted. And then as they proceed through the process, there is an interview, there is a psychological exam, there's a physical. There is a, um, a, a physical aptitude test, um, that they have to pass. And it can be a fairly lengthy process. It can be of, of, um, being reviewed for the hiring status. Is there anything I'm missing in that, Chief, that you can?
No, no, you covered it pretty well. It just has to be an opening in the department.
There has to be an opening.
It goes, the, the list are broken up by disabled vets, that disabled veterans that live in town are first. Veterans are second that live in town. Then it drops down to residents is the third. And then out of town residents is the fourth category, major category.
And I've just had town meetings several years ago, um, maybe more than several now, um, did pass a, a bylaw to, um, try to adjust that residency period for potential candidates. So that if you had lived in Brookline, graduated from Brookline High School within the last 10 years, that you would be eligible regardless.
I, I, I'm still confused about what is on the civil service exam itself. I mean, it, it's doing one calling, but I don't, what kinds of questions are asked? What is, is it specific for police, for, for police in Massachusetts? Is it, is, is that, is that specific or is it for general civil service jobs? I just don't have any feel at all for what they put on that exam.
So, so, yeah. But maybe we need to, you know, uh, have a fact sheet presented because I think that is an important question. You know, you, not, not just, you know, what, you know, questions are on the exam, but, uh, also, um, you know, the process of, of taking the test. You know, all that other stuff that Casey talked about.
And I will just, um, it just got very dark outside. If everybody notices out their window, it's, um, really stirring up out there pretty crazy. The civil service test, which I did take, you know, twenty-three years ago or so, um, it is specific to policing. I don't believe it's the same test that's offered to other civil service positions. And it's tried to, tries to capture your ability to, uh, being observant and objective and whatnot. The police department does have a short video, um, that's in production now by Sergeant Chris Millen, who has been, um, integral in, in leading our hiring and recruitment process, um, over the last several years. And so we hope to have that available for this committee, um, and the task force and any other interested parties within, you know, the next week or so. And that gives a much more comprehensive overview than I could give, um, right now on the entire hiring and recruitment process. So that will be available again, hopefully within about a week.
Okay, great. Uh, Raj?
Hello? Did you say?
No, you have your hand raised.
Oh, uh, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
My question was for Casey and Dan, uh, what their, uh, comment is on, on whether they favor the body cameras or not?
Well, okay, let's, let's, I mean.
I'm happy to answer for myself, Bernard. I do support the body cameras personally. I think that it would, um, lend a lot of transparency to the department. I think it would also be, um, I, I, I think it would be useful for police officers and for, for the community. I, I support them and, um, you know, I would like to see what the policies and procedures look like for implementing those. That's my personal thing and not. what the policies and procedures look like for implementing those. That's my personal thing and not speaking for anyone but myself.
Right, and and.
I'd say, if if I could, I'd say a couple of years ago, at town meeting, they asked me in my role as chief, what I thought of body cameras and I endorsed them. I thought I thought we should have them. I've felt that way for years and I'm glad to see it finally come into fruition.
Yeah, so in the negotiations, the union has, I'm not sure what the exact technical words are, but has accepted body cameras. The only negotiation is the terms of the regulations, so. It is getting pretty windy out here.
I think it's time to start singing from The Wizard of Oz.
Yeah, okay, okay.
Has been hired if that particular officer may have psychologically issues, white supremacist thoughts. That officer may have general biases or stereotypes. How does a police department address those types of risk of the police officer that is presented to the public? That goes into the the second topic that we're going to explore, which is profiling and that's the policy on car and pedestrian stops, the traffic stops, the civil citations, any disparate impacts, the field interview and observation. People that may be walking on the street, how does profiling present itself in the Brookline Police Department? What does the Brookline Police Department do to address profiling? The next topic that we will be looking at and reviewing is arrests and diversion. What are the statistics to arrest and diversion? How how should they be analyzed? What recommendations we may have about that and are these diversions really effective? The next topic that we discuss and we will explore is what's the purpose of the special response team? Are there alternatives to this particular specialized team? An issue was brought up about jurisdiction, about whether or not the special response team is being adequately supervised and coordinated with the rest of the members of the Brookline Police Department. Next topic that we will be exploring is no knock warrants. No knock warrants is whether or not they should be banned in the town of Brookline. And no knock warrants are basically search warrants that the police obtain and they can go to a person's home. Do not knock and then if there's no response, the police may make a forcible entry. So we're going to look at that. And well, that there should be some recommendations about that. Related to that is also nighttime warrants. The nighttime warrants for police and homeowners presents a special risk also because the police officer may be authorized in a warrant to execute that in the nighttime. So that presents additional risk to the police and to the homeowner. And you could see that in the Breonna Taylor case where the search warrant was executed at about 12:45 in the morning as as I recalled. We will also review the weapons, the military riot gear and the equipment that Brookline Police Department have and have been utilizing. There's already a surveillance committee report on some of this and we'll be taking a look at that particular surveillance committee report and see whether or not we should be adding to that. Just issues of crowd control as evidenced by the the protest marches in recently, what kind of crowd control techniques does the Brookline Police Department use? What is the cooperation with other agencies such as the Norfolk County Sheriff's Department or the on the Boston Police Department or the Police Department or the State Police will be doing that. And then the last two topics that we will be reviewing is the mutual aid in other regional public safety regimes and houses of worship. We'll be doing a fact sheet on that. With respect to houses of worship protection, we will be looking at similar protection to address extremist elements that may be presented in Brookline. So just as the other subcommittees are looking for as data and information, we will be doing the same.
Reach, use non-traditional roles. Is that is that is that subcommittee met? Apparently not. Okay, well, we'll follow up on that. Next. Well, that's that's all. The final thing on the agenda is the, I'm sorry, Casey, you want to say something? Oh, okay. Be careful when you raise your hand. That sounds looks like you're raising your hand, Casey. The next item is a discussion of surveys. You know, the Reimagining Committee had a proposed survey that was prepared by a Tufts University professor. And that committee decided not to go forward with it. The cost would be $10,000 and the two committees have $50,000 appropriated for our work. And I think, you know, there was some concern that that was a large expenditure. But also other concerns about the methodology of the survey and other issues. I really don't have much to say about this other than that that, yeah, Ron?
So so my wife is in is on the other committee and she actually says that they are planning that that they're thinking about reconsidering the survey. There were people who feel that the survey is not perfect, but we aren't likely to get a better survey. And, you know, there's the argument that don't let perfect be in the way, get in the way of good. So they're so that so the issue is not closed in that committee. They're planning to discuss it again and it may go either way, but it's it's definitely not closed in that committee is my understanding.
Don't we have a survey on our committee? Didn't Casey and and Michael?
Yeah.
Jonathan, aren't they doing a walk and talk?
Yeah, okay, so this this is why this is an important issue of of discussion. The the whole idea of multiple possibly overlapping surveys, the survey that the that the Reimagining Committee is talking about is a very comprehensive community survey. It was originally written to go out to a so-called representative sample of citizens in Somerville and Medford. And the idea was to extend it to a representative sample of 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 residents of Brookline. And it's an academic survey for for they actually have an IRB equivalent thing going on for for Somerville and Medford. It comes out of tough tough university. So it's much broader. The 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 survey that Jonathan is, our Jonathan Mandy was is involved with was a much more focused survey, just the people who've had particular interactions with the police as opposed to a broad community survey. So that's one. So that's one thing. That's good. Well, okay, so that's my understanding.
Yeah, Casey, you want to add something?
Yeah, I'd like to just clarify. So what Jonathan was doing was interviews of people who had had experiences, negative experiences with the police, which is separate from the survey. We had looked at doing a survey and we've developed a survey that's in a in a in a draft form at this time specific to Brookline Housing Authority residents regarding their experience with walk and talk. So it was a very specific group. Because it's really important for us, if we're going to talk about the role of our walk and talk unit in the Brookline housing community, to hear from those residents. So that is not the larger community and it is not the same as as Jonathan's interviews of residents who have had negative experience. There could be some overlap, but they are different projects. So by way of update, you know, I've been working with members of our group that that produced the survey and folks from housing to look at the questions and how applicable they were to how the housing community, do they really ask the questions that that the housing managers and the housing staff and housing residents feel are are going to really address, whether or not they have had positive and meaningful relationships with our walk and talk officers, which is essentially, there will always be calls for service in in all in all areas of our community. And it's like how we assign officers to to a particular route or a particular sector, as we call it here on Brookline. We have officers that are specifically assigned to work with and respond to calls in Brookline Housing Authority so that there's, you know, some level of residents getting to know these officers and officers getting to know these residents and having it be a more fruitful, hopefully, experience for all. The concern for housing was that they thought a lot of their residents don't know the walk and talk unit by name. They just know Officer Tim, Officer Michelle, Officer Kristen, Officer David, that they've worked with for years, you know, problem solving and calls for service and whatnot. And so we're trying to work with them to make sure that we're developing a survey instrument that allows that the residents to answer in a way that they know what they're being questioned about. So some of the questions and, you know, how often do you see the walk and talk unit at, you know, events and housing? We were just kind of working through some of that and I'm going to defer to the Brookline Housing Authority staff that we're working with, Matt Baronas, Danielle Mendoza, Sheila Flaherty, people who have had, you know, many, many, many years, decades of experience with Brookline Housing Authority, I think, you know, have consulted with residents about our survey instrument and 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 be directed by them. I think the most important thing in all of this is to make sure that we're hearing from those residents and we're not developing an instrument that intuits how they would like to respond. And so it's a bit of a work in progress. I I, you know, we've bounced around ways in which we can distribute this survey to make sure that we get the 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 most wide reaching reach to the to to the residents and response, you know, kind of throwing around whether or not that paper survey or working with housing managers. We feel pretty strongly not to have it be just strictly online because that does eliminate residents and making sure that we're reaching people in the in the languages that they're comfortable in answering. And so it's a work in progress, but I do think that we're making good progress and Housing Authority has been fantastic in giving some really thoughtful responses based on their their relationships and, you know, conversations with with their with their folks, so.
Yeah, yeah. And I I think for our purposes, that's really the, you know, more appropriate survey because, you know, it's not the only purpose of this committee, but one purpose is to look at police through a racial equity lens and although there are many, many black people who don't live in public housing, that is one area where there's a significant number of black and Hispanic residents whose views are very important to this committee to understand. So Marty, you had your hand up?
Yeah, the survey is back on the agenda for Friday for the task force and their agenda packet has what appears to be a a draft of the actual survey itself.
Yeah.
People want to look at it and I know that they are planning to discuss a reconsideration of that earlier vote. I think, in fact, I see that being the only thing on their agenda for for Friday. Okay, so apparently they're going to discuss it in depth.
Okay, so.
Can you clarify, is this survey, this identical one that's being used in Somerville and Medford?
Yeah, with a few slight changes.
Yeah, it looks pretty looks pretty generic what I'm looking at. But it does put in Brookline various places, maybe just in place of the other community. This was already underway, I gather, from, is his name Eton Hirsch?
No, that's the member, he's a Tufts professor.
But he's a but he's a Tufts and he brought it to the attention of the committee and it was already underway, I guess, for these other communities. So they have plugged in Brookline in the various places.
Well, the question, the question I think that Raoul wants us to ask, answer is whether we would want to be taking this survey up. I I don't I want to hear what other people think.
So we'll ask you that specifically?
Yeah, because, you know, his committee wasn't going to do it. So he said, why don't your, why doesn't your committee do it?
That was at Friday's meeting and and he did say that at Friday's meeting that maybe we'll toss this over to the the Police Department Committee. It's $15,000 of this $25,000 budget, not 10, Bernard. It's a $15,000 price tag for that and you know, I would want to look really, really carefully at a survey that's already underway in two other communities before blowing through our entire budget to throw Brookline in there when we already have this effort underway with between Casey, Michael and and oh, and Jonathan and Jonathan doing different things in in public housing.
Okay. There's also the notion of splitting it, splitting it between their $25,000 and our $25,000 so that it's 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 only, you know, so that it that it's like 12 and a half per per committee. But anyway, if you want to think of it that way, but but, yeah.
I I just want to make a a point with the walk and talk survey. It sounds actually really good. But I was thinking about the denominator of all Brookline Housing Authority residents would be really important for us to know so that we know that the sample of people who respond are are a well representative sample of the Brookline Housing Authority. That's, I was just thinking about that, Casey, in terms of the when when we start to put it out, but it sounds like they should be able to help us do that easily. They're already working with you.
Right.
Okay, good.
But in all in all social science research, there's an element of some, so I I think you always have to factor that in, right? People choose to participate or not to participate.
And who and who approaches them determines how they respond. And so, you know, there's a lot of issues that, you know, we would have to be factored in.
And that's why and that's why there is the sort of interview process as well. That's that's you know, part of that to talk to people to see if they'll be willing to engage in dialogue, to speak, to get to know kind of their story based on the questionnaire that's there.
But personal touch is important in this particular case.
Casey?
Jonathan, your interviews are not necessarily for client Housing Authority residents though, and so I just want to make sure we keep them.
I I I'm sorry, I, Casey, I'm confused because from the onset, we agreed as a group, you, myself, Michael, that that was the case. And we've already spoken about this, but for some reason, it seems to be like this is what we're doing and that's what Jonathan's doing. You know, it it's all part of one thing and and it's it influences each other. It's not what Jonathan's doing and what.
Yeah, no, no, okay, come on, we don't need to, yeah.
Yeah, I'm not I'm not trying to separate it, but I I I just want to ensure that the folks that you're interviewing are also if we're if it's about walk and talk and their experience that we're we're not mixing them. If they're two separate, I'm not saying one is more valuable than the other. I just don't want to mix opinions of a group on walk about walk and talk and the experience of people living in housing with the police officers they're working with. I don't want people outside of that relationship opining about what what is important for for.
It it will be, it will be, it will be anyone who lives in housing and whatever they say will be recorded. How can you go and find somebody and say, you know, you have you had an experience with a walk and talk officer? There's a set of questionnaire that may support the findings of the survey. You know, is is a is a support, but it's it's generally questions geared towards individuals who live in housing. You know, and and, you know, and and so, so, you know, and 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 it is a support to walk and talk because they primarily are policed by walk and talk officer and that's that's kind of the hypothesis there in trying to understand.
I think this is a really important conversation, but I do think we need clarity. So I think it would be really important on Casey and Michael's survey. Instead of saying the walk and talk officers to say Officer Tim, Officer so and so, so and so. instead of saying the walk and talk officers to say Officer Tim, Officer so-and-so, 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 Michelle, Tim, I can't remember the other names. And Jonathan, when you are talking to people, if you can say to them, if one of your questions is, do you have any idea whether the officer who you had an interaction with was either Officer Tim, Officer Michelle, Officer blah, blah, blah? So at least it's not, it's, it's apples and apples, not apples and oranges. Because otherwise, we're, we're not going to get anything out of this.
Yeah, I'll, I'll send out the questions. I, I want to hear what Genesis, Genesis thoughts are on this matter because she's, you know, she's the expert in, in this kind of thing.
Well, thank you, Jonathan. I don't, I've done a lot of social science survey work. So it's given your population, there's going to be an overlap. You know, if you were going to do a Venn diagram, there would be an, there would be a section of the population that is going to overlap. It would have to. You're looking, you're both looking really at public housing, right? So, um, yeah. So I'm seeing how one gates the other, though.
But there's a, there's a way, there's a way of dealing with this. I mean, listen, there's going to be stuff that happens in public housing. Somebody's going to call 911. Whoever is on patrol is going to show up. They might not be, there's only a handful of walk and talk officers. So there are going to be times when many other of the 130 other officers are going to show up to public housing. I think we need to be really clear when people are talking about their experiences. Are they talking about Officer Tim, Officer Michelle, Officer blah, 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 blah? So that we can say the walk and talk program is either, we come to a conclusion. Either it's a really, really kind of helpful unit that makes people, makes kids in public housing get to know their local police officers and it feels like old-fashioned community policing. And, and, and the officers get to know, you know, individuals and families and they could prevent crises. Or, you know, or Jonathan comes up with, you know, a, a bunch of like officers, six patrol cars showed up with sirens blaring and came in, you know, like hot into a situation where a bunch of kids were fighting. Those are really different situations and we need to not conflate the two.
They're not, they're. But that can be sorted out in the survey questions, in the conversation.
Exactly, as long as we're using, as long as both of you are basically saying, is it Officer Michelle, Officer Tim, Officer blah, 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 blah?
Okay, they are very diff, they are different things. Standing in Coolidge Corner of Brookline Village or soliciting feedback over the townwide discussion board about negative experiences with police versus a survey specific to walk and talk. While both will provide value, but looking at, they are different and I would like to analyze those differently.
Hold on, I mean, Casey, nobody, I.
This, this conversation is sort of going off the rails.
I, I understand.
We all understand.
No, no, I, I just, you know, there's no soliciting anything on Brookline townwide discussion. I don't know where that came from. And also standing in Coolidge Corner, I, I'm, I'm not so sure.
Jonathan, specifically, those were the discussions that we had in our subgroup. And if Michael was here, I'm sure those were the discussions that we had and how you were going to conduct your interviews.
No, that's, I think you're conflating.
Okay, why, why, why don't we have this argument in your subcommittee?
I'm, I'm very confused, but yeah, we should definitely.
Okay, and, and prepare a report for the whole committee on what, what, you know, what the differences are.
I, I think it's real, this is really important, Bernard, in terms of making sure that we're all clear about what each of these efforts together and apart are doing. And, and make sure we're all defining our terms and make sure everything else. I live on Kenevett Park, you know, Kenevett Park on the corner of Avery and Thatcher. That's where I live. My, every one of my windows looks out at that park. I mean, there's not a day that goes by that there's not an officer walking by and chatting with a group. I mean, there's millions of groups of kids there. There's BU kids, there's kids from Egmont, there's kids, you know, there's now a little homeless enclave there. I mean, it's like everybody is in Kenevett Park these days. There's lots of weed, there's, it's, it's, you know, lots of partying going on. If anybody's wants to party, come to my house. So I, there are times when Officer Tim or Officer Michelle is walking by and they're like having, they're checking in on, on people who they know from public housing. Because I know a lot of people because I've lived on this corner and my, I have kids of all ages and a lot of these kids have been in my house over the years and on teams with my kids. And this is my neighborhood. So I'll see Officer Tim walk up to a kid who I know really well to check in on him. And I happen to know he's a kid that has a drug issue or he's a kid that has a mental health issue. And Officer Tim has known him forever and he's just checking up with him. Likewise, there are times when five cruisers show up because someone called 911 that a bunch of kids are smoking weed and they have hoods over their head. You know, they're wearing their hoodies, they're smoking weed and they're really noisy and it's 2:00 in the morning. And all of a sudden, it's like a free-for-all outside. The whole neighborhood is lit up, the sirens are going. It's like, you know, and, and it, those are two really different kinds of interactions with the police. So I just want to make sure that we're all being clear about what we're asking of people and what responses we're getting. I think this is a really, really important issue.
Okay, please take that up in the subcommittee. And by the way, that last incident you talked about, that'd be something that it'd be useful for the subcommittee or some subcommittee to talk about, to see if there's some better ways of dealing with a situation like that, which is very, very common around this town or any town.
You know what? And, and if you, if you're me and you're trying to sleep and it's 3:00 in the morning and, and.
Yeah, no one, yeah, it's a problem.
I'm happy when the police come because I want to try to get back to sleep. So it's not, it's not so clear cut. It might be over policing, it might also be like people want to sleep, so.
Yeah, or, or it could be just not, not the most effective way of doing policing to get people back to sleep as well as calm things down. So, but anyway, okay, so let's, let's move on.
I, I have a, you know, an additional thing to say. So to me, one of the, I'll say, points of, of all of this is that to access different segments of the community, one needs to use multiple different ways because people are comfortable with different ways of communicating. So this broad surveys, this focus race, there's, there's in-person interviews. So one of the things that, uh, it came up briefly, partly because of the, of the education subcommittee and partly having watched the way the, uh, the listening session played out, what, what was, I found myself thinking that there might be, we, maybe we should solicit even additional ways of soliciting information from, from different people in the town. And one idea that occurred to me was something in a, a kind of a town hall format where the moderator is someone who maybe isn't on either of our committees, but someone who is, I'll call it a relatively neutral public figure, if we could, if we could find such a person, and have more than one or more town hall discussions in which people could kind of share, share, share their thoughts about policing in Brookline or public safety in Brookline. And to do that, um, well, I mean, that requires, I, I think, Bernard, I, I mentioned something like this before and you, and you asked me to look into it a little bit. So at this particular point, all I did was, is I wrote up a kind of a, a kind of a draft letter that I, that I'm thinking of sending to some possible ideas for candidates to do something like that. For example, one of the things I think would be interesting, if we could, if we could pull it off, would be to have, say, someone from, say, WBUR or a figure like, I think I mentioned Liz Walker at one point or Magna Chakravarti or, or even Henry Louis Gates, someone like that, kind of lead a little town hall discussion about, about community policing. And I think that would bring out yet another segment of the population and the moderator would not be perceived to have an axe to grind. So, yeah, so I'm, I'm just.
Yeah, so something like that, which is a big deal, should be, you know, written up in proposal form. Sorry to be so bureaucratic, but.
No, that's okay.
And presented to the committee so we can discuss it and, and really, you know, get it finalized and, and off the ground.
Okay, so I've got a, I've got a draft letter and I, I might want some help in how to make it look like a formal proposal as opposed to just a draft letter. So I, should I talk with you about that?
Yeah.
I'm happy to help with that, Ron. I had written, when we had that conversation, the following names. Henry Santoro, these, these are mostly because they live in Brookline. Henry Santoro, Carrie Goldberg, Patty Wen from the Globe, Magna Chakravarti from WBUR, Marjorie Egan, Deb Becker, Liz Walker and Latoya Edwards.
Yeah.
And Jenna Russell from the SpotGlobe Spotlight Team, just because I work closely with her, she lives in Plymouth.
Yeah, okay, great.
Okay.
I'm happy to call any of those people. I don't think we need a proposal. If we know what we want to do.
Well, no, the, the committee, we, we know. Have it presented to the committee so that we can, we can discuss it and know exactly what, what we're pulling together.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't think we should, yeah.
I'm happy to make, I'm happy to make those introductions. I know all of them.
Yeah, just, just tell me if you want to put it on the agenda.
Okay, I'll follow up with you, June, okay?
Okay, thanks, Ron, I appreciate it.
Okay, that's all this on our agenda. Anyone have anything else to say? Janice, looks like you're ready to speak.
SROs, did you want to talk about SROs and, and your conversation with the headmaster?
Um, regarding, oh, school resource officers, I'm sorry.
Taking study room only.
Single room occupancy.
Yeah, let's see, I did, I did reach out to the headmaster and he spoke at the reimagining committee regarding the location of the SRO school resource officers at the high school. And I just, you know, conveyed that this was an issue that came up in the reimagining committee. It seems like something that they should think about that, that probably could be fixed fairly quickly or easily. So, you know, I, I talked to, you know, steps to success, or steps to success only. And, you know, they didn't say, think that this was a problem. Malcolm Cawthorn, who's, who does the medical program, apparently hasn't brought that, brought this up, you know, the location of the SRO officers. But I think Andy Myers is going to just start a discussion to see if it's more appropriate to move the location of the SRO officers from that center court in the high school, right at the front door to some other location, just so that, you know, if, if there's anyone who thinks that, you know, it's a problem that police are right there next to the medical and the African-American and Latino students or scholars program and steps to success, you know, we can just deal with that problem and, and, and make sure it's, it's not an issue for anyone.
I think there'd be a fight to have Officer Katie and, and her puppy there, you know. I, there'd be a fight to get them close by because that dog is so, so sweet.
But, but, but Headmaster Myers is going to start a conversation. He acknowledged that the original decision to locate them where they are, you know, was not a decision that was made with a lot of input. So they're, they're going to start a conversation and address that. So I mean, that, that's the type of situation that, you know, our committees can identify and hopefully encourage people to come to a resolution. Okay, yes.
That's a quick question that that reminds me of something that I wanted to ask.
Okay.
How, how are we, how and when are we going to start figuring out who to bring in as outside experts in this various things? And the reason that reminded me was that I did tell everybody that I have a friend that just retired at 870 as a juvenile court judge and has been doing a lot of writing about SROs and reforming that school-to-police pipeline. And this overlaps with the question of the two separate committees because some of the experts that we might want, they might want as well. I would hope that somebody like that, for instance, or Jack McDevitt of Northeastern, who leading statewide guy on racial profiling.
Right.
Both committees, we want to hear from them. Is there a way to?
Yeah, so my, 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 yeah, my thinking is that, you know, you put together, you know, a proposal. I mean, I don't mean to be bureaucratic, but you know, put your ideas down on paper and, and bring it to the committee and, and we could probably set up a joint hearing or a joint, uh, interactive thing on that, just, just like the thing that Ron's going to put together.
Yeah, I also reached out to Strategies for Youth and they do, they work with police all over the country. Less so weirdly in Massachusetts than, except they work with the MBTA police and the Boston police a little bit. But they work more in other states. They, they, they're a nonprofit in Cambridge and they work with police on interacting with youth. They also work with kids and after-school programs all over the country in what to do if, you know, if, if they have a police interaction and they do it. They have amazing materials, educational materials for kids and families, including they do this whole Jeopardy game in after-school centers with teenagers in, in Chicago and Lincoln, Nebraska and Cleveland, Ohio. Anyway, they're local, they're right in Cambridge. And, you know, we could have them come in and speak with us about the work they do. They do a phenomenal presentation.
Okay, so, so again, you know, put together proposals. The reason why I'm asking you to put together proposals is that there are a zillion things that people can come up with in terms of programs, et cetera. And just to keep things under control and focused, I think it's important to bring these things to the full committee so that we can, you know, schedule things as well as identify, you know, what, what's, what's, you know, priority and what's not a priority.
All right, and, and Bernard, I mean, and I really am not trying to be difficult. I'm just going to send this now to you and Devin because I am like this, you know.
Okay.
This volunteer job is taking up about 60 hours a week of my time.
Hey, tell me about it.
Yeah, no, and, you know, I, I need to, I need to work for money at some point. So I'm, I'm going to give, I'm just going to send this to you and Devin and you tell me if you want me to reach out to them.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Good. Okay, anything else before we close the meeting down? No, meeting's closed then. Oh, wait, Janice, you didn't have something to say? Looks like you're on the verge of speaking. Oh, your screen is frozen. Okay, bye, everyone.
Bye.